Hi, welcome everyone. My name is Steve Edwards. I am the Executive Director of the Community Dispute Resolution Center in Missoula County. We are a small nonprofits, very small, here in town. We work with the judicial system in the county and the city to help folks resolve all kinds of disputes, both inside and outside of court. We also work with families and landlord and tenant issues as well. We're a nonprofit institution and you can find more about us at CBRC.org. And one of the great sort of exciting things that I get to do often is this, moderating neighborhood council meetings and candidate debates in the city of Missoula. And I just want to thank all of you guys first and foremost for coming out tonight. It's really important. Local government is very important and you should applaud yourselves for coming out and participating this evening. You have a pretty good turnout in this really cool new building here with Salvation Army. So, thanks Salvation Army for giving us the opportunity to host this meeting here. Also, the Office of Neighborhoods, Jane and Stephanie, everybody who works there, they work really, really, really hard to get these things organized. And that also goes for our leadership teams for our various neighborhood councils. And there's a whole bunch of them here tonight because wards five and six have a lot of different neighborhoods. I'm not even going to try and remember all of them. But your leadership team members, can I get hands of leadership team members that are here from the various councils? Excellent. Great, glad to see you guys here tonight. Also, thank you for sponsoring these events. So, we have a pretty sort of one focused issue tonight and that is our Candidates Forum. I'll remind everybody that this is also an official neighborhood council public meeting as well. So, at the end of our forum tonight, we will have an opportunity for folks to talk about non-agenda items, stuff that's not on the official agenda for tonight. The only official agenda item is the Candidates Forum, which I believe we'll move to next. Cool. Let me get my notes here before we get rolling. The last folks I want to thank tonight also is MCAT. So, Missoula Community Access Television is here this evening. They're going to be filming and giving a chance for folks who can't be here in person tonight to watch what we're doing and to hear from their candidates in their various wards. So, I'll remind everyone that at MCAT, M-C-A-T dot org, they'll be playing these videos again online. You can access those both online and then also on the television, that television thing. So, they'll be rebroadcast. Those times and dates are going to be on the back of your agenda, so you get a chance to pick up an agenda sheet. They'll be on the back there. So, make sure you can tell your friends and neighbors that this is also available on MCAT as well. So, great. So, what we have next, we'll just jump right in as our Candidates Forum. So, we have two wards tonight that are going to be having a discussion with all of you citizens, wards five and six. We have three candidates from Ward six and two from Ward five. We're seemingly missing one candidate tonight, but if he comes a little later, we'll hold him in. What I guess I'll do now is explain the structure of what we're going to do here tonight. We have a relatively small group, so we'll try and keep it fairly informal, but we do have some ground rules for both candidates and everyone involved. And these are just part of the normal course of any neighborhood council meeting. So, I'll just go and read these out specifically. "We expect that participants will engage in active listening, make concise statements, and observe the time limits per speaker." "We also expect that participants will refrain from insanity, personal attacks, signs, signs, like, you know, signs, and hight lighting applause." So, I'll throw down the hammer if any of those things happen. Also, if you're not going to keep your agenda, make sure you go ahead and self recycle those. You can drop them off here at the main table and we'll take those back. So, what we're going to do next is talk about the rules for the Candidate Forum and then we'll jump right in. So, the first rule I'll talk about are the time limits. So, first off, each candidate will have three minutes to introduce him or herself to you guys right off the bat. They can talk about whatever they want during that time. And then, once that's over, we'll start in with the questions you guys have asked. So, on every table, there's a little pile of note cards and some pens. We're just asking you guys to fill out those note cards with any questions or issues you might have for the candidates. Those have come to me and took me a little bit of time tonight. We have a pretty good pile here, but if you think of any other questions you want to answer, you can bring them to Jane or give her a little heads up and she will bring those to me as well. We'll try to get through as much of this staff as we possibly can. What I normally do is look at the cards and see if there are concurrent issues. So, already I've seen, you know, three or four cards have a very similar question. So, I may consolidate some of those questions so we're not repeating them several times. But otherwise, I'm just going to put them in the pile and draw them randomly and we'll see what, again, it's time to say about stuff that's important to you guys. So, anyway, as you can see tonight, we have some fancy name tags. And so, we have one candidate here from Ward five, Julie Armstrong, and three from Ward six, Rick Brown, Michael Ellsworth, and Michelle Kares. Is that anyone ready? Okay, cool. So, we'll just jump right in if there's no questions. Cool. The last thing I'll say is that for as more of the candidates, Stephanie here has the time cards, so she'll give you a little heads up on how much time you got on each of your portions of the discussion. So, 30 seconds, 10 seconds, and stop. And you'll get two minutes each to answer each question, if that makes sense. And then, at the end of the forum, you'll have three minutes as well to make a closing statement. And we're going until eight-ish and we'll just get to as many of your questions as possible and then we'll wrap things up. So, yeah, thanks again to the neighborhood councils for bringing some food and food tonight. Make sure you feed yourselves. We'll have a great time. All right. I have a mic that I'm going to keep. Maybe we have another one that hopefully works and you guys can just use that and you can pass it back and forth. So, we'll just get started with our introductions and I'll just, I'm just going to start left to right and we'll keep it mixed up, so please.
Hi, everybody. My name is Julie Armstrong. I'm from Ward six. I own a business on one side of the mall and I live on the other side of the mall. So, all the ensuing improvements to the mall are of great interest to me, my property values and my livelihood. So, I'll probably be talking about that later. Did I say Ward six?
Yes.
Yes.
Everybody's running for it.
Clearly, I don't know what I'm talking about. Ward five, as I see my husband back there shaking his head at me like I'm an idiot. So, small business owner, we moved here. I've been here seven years. I am from Texas. Don't hold that against me. And we moved here because we absolutely love it. We own property in the county. We love everything there is about Missoula, the people especially, and this is probably where we'll end up retiring. Absolutely adore it. My business is doing great, so I have time now to dedicate to the city. I'm on a couple of city committees right now and have enjoyed working within the system and getting some things done. And I think I have some strengths that I can transition from my previous corporate life to city council, including streamlining and transparency and budget work and things of those sorts. Socially, very progressive, probably fiscally a bit more conservative than the folks you're used to, and I get a lot of dirty looks when I say that, but I truly am. So, math is math and that doesn't change where you live.
And great, thanks Julie. And maybe before we move on to Rick here, I will go ahead and invite the folks that are out in the hallway to come on in. We've got a few more people. And if you guys have some real leader tables to have things join, that'd be great.
Can you check that microphone? It doesn't sound like we're on.
Yeah, the other words are definitely setting me up on this one now.
I think it works.
Perhaps I need to speak up.
Thank you.
I didn't think it did when you were using it though.
Okay, please, go for it. Thanks.
Good evening. My name's Rick Brown. I'm from Ward six. And I've lived here most of my life. Graduated from Franklin over here and Hellgate High School. I have a degree in police science and I've spent 25 years in law enforcement from 73 to 98, starting out with the Region One Drug Team here in Missoula, working for Sheriff John Moll. I filtered down to Denver and worked with Denver PD for several years and then I came back to Missoula and finished working for Missoula County in the jail. I don't, I really don't know what else to tell you. That's pretty much it in a nutshell.
Thanks, Rick.
My name is Michael Ellsworth. I'm running in Ward six. I'm a veteran and a small business owner. I have three initiatives I'm running on: Growth Through Agriculture, Neighborhood Stabilization, and Community Revitalization. These are local ordinances that are effective within and outside the city. I started off getting out of the Army and then I traveled abroad, went to Seattle, worked with some really big time real estate developers. And with that, I got into property management. And then, just being in the rat race, I wanted to come back home. I'm a seventh generation Montanan. And I started my own businesses here after I finished up with my GI Bill as well. So, now I'm running for city office and I'm doing so because I see a lot of community members that are in a world of hurt and struggling. And even though this Missoula is a really great place and very socially progressive, meaning to have fiscal responsibility and strong and wise and transparent leaders who will work directly with the neighborhoods and community building and networking.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michael.
My name's Michelle Kares, also running for city council in Ward six. I am running for city council because I've been involved in two neighborhood councils in Missoula, both the River Road where we are currently and Franklin to the Fort where I now own my home. I've had the privilege of living in all three of the neighborhoods that make up Ward six: South Gate Triangle, River Road, and Franklin to the Fort, which I think gives me a good insight on some of the advantages and challenges in Ward six. Like I said, I've been on two different neighborhood councils within the ward and that experience exposed me to city politics and made me realize that it's something I'm very interested in and it's something I feel very capable of being a contributing team member. I care about the city owning our water. I care about good oversight on Russell Street reconstruction. As you may or may not know, Phase one has been pretty much decided through Wyoming, but Phases two and three are not. And I think that good oversight is really important and really important toward six. I care about a lot of different things and I look forward to talking about that with you today. But I also understand that wild and crazy things happen in city councils that you just can't predict. And I look forward to talking about those issues too. I'm on the board of the YWCA and I volunteer a lot and I am a contributing community member. And so, I look forward to contributing to our city in this way also. Thank you.
Great. You guys can still hear okay? I'm going online, everyone, to keep the microphone close to your face and get the audio going. Okay, cool. So, like I said, we've got your questions here consolidated, like I said, a couple of these, basically the same topic. So, we kind of use a quantitative measure for that. And since there's a lot of people who should these topics, we'll start with those and then the rest of the questions, we'll just throw in the luck of the draw. Then what we'll do is we'll just continue with our sequence here. We'll just start with Julie and we'll give each candidate the chance to respond to each of these questions. So, there's been quite a few questions this evening that have come in concerning the both residential and commercial development that is currently ongoing and may continue to go in the future in these two wards. We've got a lot of neighborhoods here that are seeing some pretty rapid and drastic changes. And so, I'm going to try and paraphrase here a little bit, but maybe I'll make this a two-part question. One, what can you do as a candidate to encourage really healthy business development and growth in these wards? And then, the second part is, are there concerns you have about development in and of itself within wards and how it affects the neighborhoods beyond just a business sense? And then, two parts. Try that. If that makes sense.
So, obviously, in my ward, I don't have the Russell Street issue. I don't have a lot of the changes. However, the Brook Street corridor is being redone and I hope that will greatly increase the traffic flow we have right now because folks get to the mall going through the neighborhoods and that's very tough, especially when there aren't sidewalks on all the streets and the kids don't have safe passage to walk to school. They either have to go through the mall or there are a lot of issues on that side of things. As you know, the TIF funds were approved for the first stage of the mall reconstruction and that should be good for all the businesses and mine included. The more traffic you get for the business district, the more business you have. And there are some businesses that are really struggling in the South Gate Triangle. So, obviously, that's the upside of what we hope is going to happen. The downside of what we're worried about is that we're going to be completely overwhelmed by a tremendous amount of construction and have no say in how, no say in how the streets are going to be mitigated. Like right now, just for instance, there are some medians that they're placing in the Brook Street corridor that are going to cause some havoc for some neighborhoods. And of course, that's already out of the can. That's going to happen. So, I think that if we can keep our ear to the ground and I can keep the ward informed about what's happening, maybe we can have a better say in what's going to happen going forward throughout that area. I know a lot of people are concerned about the bridge over Reserve and how that's going to affect their lives and how that's going to affect traffic flow. Missoula's going to grow. Everybody was very excited about the South Town Crossing. That's gone over very well, the Cabela's and the Coles, and that wasn't a major disruption to the neighborhood. So, I'd like to keep that level of interest and comfort in our neighborhood in particular going forward.
Thank you.
In Ward six, I don't think we've got much room left for businesses building up. We're kind of on the fringe. When this road out here widens out, we're going to be right on the edge of it. And as you stated, traffic is going to be an enormous problem that the city council's going to have to address and address quickly. There's a couple of things I wanted to hit on, but the bridge over the over Reserve that came up yesterday with Michelle and I, I believe that that is subterfuge to stop the mammoth loads from going down the road and not actually needed as a footbridge. I don't know if anybody else has thought about that, but that's my play on that.
Well, when you look about like residential and commercial development and you turn to the zoning codes, what you find out is that there are several categories, all based upon like dense urbanization. And even the city council tonight is going and talking about an inward growth policy for which is mandatory urban sprawl, both horizontally and vertically, by the way. But if you turn to the Department of Revenues, like land classification codes and everything, you'll find out it's very expansive. So, by including agriculture, rangelands, and going away from inclusionary zoning for which is building on top of each other, and then complying with state and federal law, we should be establishing a six-mile boundary around the city limits. And as a city grows, we also permit homesteading laws because that's how homeownership is obtained, that's how community stakeholding principles have always been followed, and it's part of Montana's traditions and customs. And with that, we can see great, great expansion in local business, trade, as everybody is secured in a place of residency, a place of business. And if they don't, they want to rent or if they want to do anything else, there's a lot of apartments available since most everything's Section 8 housing. So, the Growth Through Agriculture initiative is what I'm bringing forth would change that. And that's only with the help of the neighborhoods as we build and it's a process, but we can change and I believe that's true modernization. And I believe that's the great things that we can do. Furthermore, just a little bit of time left. When you talk about good paying jobs that can be sound for individuals to keep good livings, we have to bring back those traditional sources such as stewardship, farming, ranching. And regardless of how the city council may feel, county commissioners, just read it, this commission study, it's called Losing Ground. Agriculture was the biggest industry, now it's collapsing. We need to start over, rebuild, do it together.
I think the city's role in business development is providing clear and concise, well, concise is maybe hoping for too much, but clear zoning rules. And I think that that is really the place where we can go. I've heard that folks think that we've taken some good steps in that direction and so I would just pursue that further down the road, working at our zoning and our city code to ensure that business development is easy for people to do, both and especially those who are building from locals and those who are coming from out of state to build in our community. Concerns that I have for development, especially in our neighborhoods, a couple of them have been mentioned. There is not very much commercial activity in Ward six other than Russell Street and Third Street, but we do have commercially zoned streets like Catlin. And I think that there's room for further development, especially in our non-primary streets, so in River Road and in Franklin to the Fort. Because other than, like I said, Russell Street, Third Street, and a little bit of Mount, but not very much, you don't see very much commercial activity. And I'd like that to be something that we have access to so that people can walk and bike and drive to these different commercial opportunities. Something else I care a lot about is traffic timing and stalling. I sit at a lot of red lights. My husband is a construction worker. He sits at a lot of red lights, going from different jobs and getting materials. And so, when we had an event this weekend and a bunch of community members came over for funders, they were saying, "I too sit at red lights." And so, I think that it's a shared concern and something that I will really be focusing on. Thank you.
Great, thanks everyone. Another popular question, we've got a few responses on this one, is concerning mountain water. And in particular, and again, very similar types of questions here. In your opinion, has the mayor and the city council gone too far in its attempt to acquire mountain water? And you can answer that either way. And then, secondly, two-part question again. How do you propose the city would pay for the liabilities, legal liabilities that come along with that process?
I do not have an answer on how the city's going to pay for the liabilities from the legal process. I do agree that the city should continue to pursue ownership of the water. If you look 20, 30 years from now, water's going to be the one thing you can't beg, borrow, steal, create. It's, you can come up with a lot of different solutions on what you want to do with it, but if it doesn't exist, you're out of luck. So, from that perspective, it makes sense that we own and operate our own water system. The unknown is whether or not we're going to operate it efficiently at a profit, at a deficit. We don't know those numbers yet. We're in it to win it at this point. There's been an investment made. Instead of, you don't just stop now and cut your losses, you go forward, you make the best of it. And I think they obviously have a very good chance of making that happen. They're not the only ones suing this company for ownership of the water. There's another company under Carlyle called Apple Valley that is doing the same thing for the same reasons. So, we're not, we're not unique snowflakes in this. This is an ongoing problem under this parent company, Carlyle. So, my bottom answer is yes, I support it. I don't know the numbers and I'm not going to pretend to know the ins and outs of the entire thing. Was there another part of that water question?
I think you've got it both. The other, the second part was the ability of the city to cover the costs, legal liabilities and the costs of acquiring this water system.
Yeah, I don't know what the, I don't know what the fund is that's covering those things, but like I said, it, at the point we are now, they've put themselves in a very good position. The money is not wasted and it's looking very much like this is going to be a successful venture. Operating it, that's another venture, so.
Well, my personal opinion, and I've talked to people from other parts of the state and they think we've lost our minds and we're stealing this water system from a private entity. We may be doing so illegally, but it doesn't seem moral to a lot of people. Insofar as paying for it, the people that are going to pay for it are obviously the taxpayers of Missoula. And the cost of the water system itself has been, the figures between 100 million and 140 million have come up. We've already got, I think, 12 million invested in legal fees and we would be a lot better to just back out at this point, in my opinion. That's the way I look at it. I think if we obtain the water system, Carlyle's experts will be gone and we'll have to rehire everybody new to try to figure out how to run a water system. And I'll bet you within a year, when you turn on your taps, it'll be brown.
Yeah, I support the purchasing of Montana Water Company just because Montana Water Company hasn't really been that great of a public utility system in itself. But I believe that we should be establishing a public water trust or a joint stock holding company whereby the property owners are secured in a certificate of water rights. And then furthermore, I believe that conservation districts should be overlapped with neighborhood districts. And then, the actual neighborhood councils can establish their own watershed irrigation plans, do more modernization, canals, ditches, whatever that we need here locally, even sewers, septic lines. And it could be a reserve power in furtherance of culture master planning. But as far as it comes to paying for it, obviously, a lot of this has already been designated under municipal bonds. But under equity asset financing and in accordance with public land laws and private property mineral laws, the underlying mineral interest within the canals, rich rivers, ditches, everything can actually be used as a balancing and a collateral asset and reduction of any debt obligation that is established under any municipal bond to fully carry it out. So, it's a lot, lot to take in, I know that. Montana Water Company is very complicated, but we need to recognize our rights. And the last thing that we should be doing is go to another abusive water user licensing system. If there's any, you know, water use that needs to be dealt with, that can be dealt with under the Tenant-Landlord Act. And then furthermore, by allowing urban and rural neighborhoods to work together under, you know, the Neighborhood Stabilization Initiative I bring forth, we can literally be establishing community land and water banks and then that will reduce the administrative costs and taxes. So, we would also be able to perform even greater services.
As I mentioned when I introduced myself, I am in support of the city owning our water company. I, like Julie, think that we should continue on the path and really would echo a lot of what Julie said. Some additional points that I'd like to mention are that I think that the, if we were to lose at the end of the day, that yes, the taxpayers would be paying it and by which methods, I don't know. I think municipal bond is probably the primary method, but I'm not educated enough to be saying that. And I think that that's true for all of our citizens, which increases the kind of unknown quality of this because so much of it is in the court system right now and we don't know these numbers and there's a lot of concern in the unknown. But I trust our current city council. I believe that we will manage this water company well. Obviously, this, if we were to gain the water company, it could go to a couple of different departments, one of which is the water treatment plant and the department within which that is held. And I'm really happy with that department and feel confident that we can hire those necessary and work together to have a quality municipally-owned water company. I too have talked to others in the state who are part of systems that are municipally-owned and are happy with those systems. I think that Missoula will be happy with our own municipally-held water. Thank you.
Great, thanks guys. Really thoughtful answers. So, another, this is the third or the second to last. Did you guys go through?
No, you want to switch it up so she's not always going first, you know? Just courtesy, I don't mind, you know?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. We'll start down here with Michelle and bring We start down here with Michelle and bring it back the other direction. That works. So another concern that is part of the citizens' questions here tonight for quite a few folks is the issue of taxes. So we have a number of citizens here this evening that are concerned that City of Missoula, the tax situation is moving beyond what they can afford for folks on fixed income, for senior citizens. And there are a lot of folks who are concerned, the city council tends to simply rubber stamp a lot of projects that come through the council. So the question here, I guess, is where do you stand on this level of taxes that Missoula citizens are asked to pay for their communities? That's the first question. Follow-up to that is if you were to, say, advocate lowering taxes, what types of projects, programs, services would you cut if those taxes were lowered? Go ahead, Michelle.
Yep, thank you. So I appreciate a safe community. I appreciate good schools and parks, and I understand that those things cost money and I'm willing to pay them. I am happy with the current level of taxation, I guess, is the shortest answer, to be completely clear with you. And so recommended cuts are not something that I have details to share with you about. When I look at my tax bill, I see that the amount that goes to the city doesn't seem to be very much, in my opinion. And I'm happy to pay the, I think, I should have these numbers and I apologize, I'll put them on my website. I think that we pay $600 a year for the city. Anyways, I shouldn't say numbers I'm not sure of. I'm happy with our community, I feel safe, and I appreciate the resources that I have available to me. So, thanks for listening.
Taxes really are in itself a showing of having a multi-level bureaucratic machine, not necessarily, you know, the means to sustain government operations. By shifting away from having all these boards and offices, and boards and offices that are, you know, rubber stamping, we can actually allow the neighborhood councils and leadership teams to begin assuming the traditional administrative and financing roles. And by doing so, we can be establishing community workshops. So then you directly have the right to public participation. Because right now you show up at the boards, you can make a comment, you can bring complaints against your neighbor, but you do not have decision-making capabilities. So by establishing community networks, we can directly allow individuals to engage in networking, commerce, trade, you know, resolve land problems, and do so easily and efficiently. And then while, while all that goes, we can be reducing all those taxes that are necessary to sustain the current administration and other departments that really are dead weight. They don't perform any public service, nor do they actually carry out any field work. So that's one aspect. Before, you know, it would be surprising to see like a 25% of 1% increase, and now we're seeing 5%, 6% increases annually. And this is not sustainable. And it doesn't even go to good government programs. It goes to special interests who accept subcontract awards. So I think by allowing individuals, trade associations, local businesses to engage in these workshops, we can resolve a whole wide issue and problems outside the political spectrum, as based upon our individual rights. And that's what I'd be advocating for. Thank you.
As far as taxes go, it seems like the city council doesn't hesitate to drop four or five more percent every year on your, your house taxes. And as somebody who pays or is assessed about $3,000 a year on, on my home, and I make 14,000 on, on social security, that's my only income, it takes a big nip out of my, out of my budget. Insofar as cutting taxes and giving up things, my public safety background wouldn't allow me to even think of cutting back on the police or the great fire department that we have here, as well as animal control, who seems to be the redheaded child of the, of the whole system, they never get any money. And, and the city courts, who have been asking for another judge. And I sat through a day of court down there and they're really bottlenecked and they could use another judge.
Is that it?
That's all I'm going to do.
So you're good there. So, just real quickly, if you've not been involved in, in politics around here, Missoula actually has a ton of volunteer communities. There are neighborhood councils, you all have a say. There's actually a very intricate system of commissions and boards that are all, they're all funded by, by nothing, because they are public participation and everyone has a say. You can look on there, there are vacancies all the time. And that input is directly put into every decision council makes. So I'm, I'm not sure where Michael lives, but where I live, everybody can participate in the process. And I've lived in very large cities and that is not possible. Your vote actually counts, your voice actually counts here. In this little fishbowl we call Missoula, everybody has a say in the political process. As far as taxes, eight years ago, milk cost what? $2 a gallon? And now it's what, $5.50? $4.50 for a gallon of milk? Math is math. Everything has gone up. It's, it's wrong to expect that the policemen, the firemen, the teachers don't expect a salary bump too. Expenses have gone up across the board and it's silly to expect that the city would not have the same expense, expenses that you do. Asphalt costs more than it did 10 years ago. And I, you guys are not dumb, you understand math. And all of us don't like tax increases, but I think that you understand exactly where they come from. You're happy to live here, you're happy to pay for the services that you get, and if you're not happy, you let us know. That's the way the system works. So I, I do think there's some wiggle room. I would love to see the county pass a gas tax, because that would give us some relief on the property tax side of things. Obviously, I'm not running for a county position, so I don't have a say in that, but I sure as heck will try and influence it.
All right, so that concludes the multiple question portion of our evening. Now we go on to the Wheel of Chance. So we've got a whole bunch of different questions now, all different kinds, and I'm going to have one of you.
I want to buy a bottle.
And me too.
All right, it's a pretty straightforward question, but it's also pretty wide-ranging. You start with Rick this time? In the next two years, what issues do you expect the city council to address? And what issues do you specifically want to champion?
Well, I'll just address the elephant in the room. Oh, I can't do that, because they banned the elephant. Well, never mind. The gun issue.
No pause.
The, the gun issue that came up recently is something I am absolutely against. They're sticking their noses in something that they shouldn't be doing, messing with private transfers of firearms. And, and then only in the city, it wouldn't accomplish anything if people just want to bypass it, they can go to Lolo, have coffee, swap guns, sell guns, whatever they want to do. What, what I feel they're really after, it's, it's a, it's a run at the, at the gun shows. Because they will do great damage to the gun shows, especially the big one at the Fieldhouse, where it, it brings a lot of money into the community during that period. It's, it's a time-honored thing that, in Missoula, I personally have attended that gun show for 50 years. I know I don't look 80, but it's, it's, it's just something the city shouldn't be involved in. And, and I firmly oppose it.
Yeah, we'll just head it back down the table in the same sequence.
You said, what's the biggest issue and the least issue, you said, or just the biggest? I'm questioning them, so.
Upcoming issues and issues you plan to champion.
Okay.
Yeah, what are the issues you think are upcoming and which ones are you sort of really think are important?
Well, as we see right now, like obviously, having an efficient growth policy that not just focuses inward, which is great, you know, you could easily use that as urban renewal initiatives. But most importantly is, like I said, the growth policy, future expansion, resource and allotment management planning. I would say however, the most pertinent issue that's at stake here isn't our, our rivers and streams and creeks, as well as job creation. It goes hand in hand. We can't live here if it's unclean and unhealthy. And you can't live here if you don't have a good job or, you know, a means to stay and be part of the community. So I would say just advocacy, the two initiatives, three initiatives I bring forth, I'll just be working for them, starting within my ward and directly working with the neighborhood councils. And really try to effectively build a better, better place. Just work at it day to day. Don't quit until late wee hours in the nights, so. Thank you.
An issue that I'm pretty interested in that just kind of crested the entry level of city council is commercial design standards. As you may or may not know, there is a new building being built on Madison and Broadway on the northeast corner. It's cellular plus. And it, it looks like corporate America, it looks like any town USA. And while I'm not against national organizations coming to our town by any means, I just wonder what it means when the gateway to our community looks like anywhere else. I also understand that you can't regulate good taste. And so how do we handle good design standards in a regulatory kind of way without eliminating good taste? And I, I don't know, but I'm very interested. Like I said, it just kind of crested the city council's viewpoint, and I think that that's something that I would jump full force into. I could just go on and on, but I won't. An issue that I plan to champion is civic engagement. As you guys heard, I got involved through neighborhood councils. I have a lot of volunteer experience in our community. Like Julie mentioned, we have a robust system in which to get involved in our community. And I love that. And I think that we have a lot of really good faces, but I want to get more faces, having fulfilling experiences. And so that doesn't sound like a huge issue, and that's because I'm looking forward to investing my time in all the things that our city council is bound to encounter. But if I were to champion one thing, that would probably be it during my term. Thank you. Julie.
I'm just going to ask you guys to read the gun, the gun ordinance. No one's infringing your rights to sell weapons. They, they're wanting you to take a look at just the paperwork that happens. They want you just to investigate who you're selling it to. No one's telling you you can or cannot sell a gun. So just before you hear all the rhetoric and see everything posted, take a look and see what it says. My position on that is that no one should be forced to do it, but I think it would be fantastic if it's available to you, should you want to use it. And hopefully that might change people's opinions a little bit about their personal responsibility for, for selling and transferring a weapon. I don't think we should force anybody to do it, however. Jobs and affordable housing, it all comes down to money. If you have a good job and you're able to pay all your bills, you're a much happier citizen. We've got to bring in some companies that will provide long, good-paying jobs. I think our Chamber of Commerce should be putting CEOs on planes, showing them fly fishing trips and saying, "This is why you need to move your whole dag gum operation here and employ our people." I, I don't know that they're doing a lot of that right now. I don't know we have the money to do that, but God bless, you get one guy in here who has a good fishing trip and he's probably going to move here, move his whole company. Affordable housing was brought up. Not all affordable housing is Section 8. Affordable housing has about 27 different definitions, and I understand about two of those. I don't understand all the rest, but I can guarantee you that there are folks right now that would benefit from affordable housing. And that doesn't mean Section 8, $400 a month. It might mean $700 a month. And that population needs to be addressed. They've somewhat been pushed down the wayside, and I would like to see a little more visibility brought to that issue and, and some planning done around those folks' needs.
Great, thanks. All right, back to the Wheel of Chance. All right, again, pretty straightforward question here, and we can start with Michael on this one. What is an environmental issue you believe should be a city priority?
Well, there are quite a few really needed cleanup projects that haven't been carried out or even established. When it comes to environmental, you know, cleanup or just conservation, preservation, no, we should be including private property rights within the local policies that the city has been bringing forth. A lot of the policies brought forth, and even the meanings, they're pretty, pretty out there. I mean, for instance, they declare private property rights as a social injustice, development rights as a leading cause to environmental degradation. And then we have an inward growth policy. And what we see is city council using United Nations guidelines under Agenda 21, and it's not good at all. All right, we need to be building our own community prestige, we need to be adhering to our own culture master plans, we should be having community networks, not just within one word, but in all words. And then have other aspects in community vision, enhancing principles of democracy. And we should just never give up, always advocate for what you believe for. I'd say one of the biggest things too is going away with all these resolution orders that give private companies special monopolies. These are usually done through mayoral orders. And what's happened is that we've seen complete shutdown in those local businesses that would be engaging into environmentalism, conservation, preservation, including ranchland, farmland, everything, rather than always having it directed to one or two special corporate interests that have their own agendas. And it goes, same thing with the city councilman, having strong, transparent, and wise leaders, then we won't be seeing all these backdoor deals and it can lead to, away from city gardens to hanging gardens.
Thanks. An environmental issue that's a priority to me is wise use of the remaining open space bond funds. Recently, a few different open space bond initiatives have passed, and those have primarily been on our city limits. And I want to explore using the remainder of those open space bond funds in our inner city. I think that that would be helpful for folks who are unable to get to our city limits and would enhance our quality of life. Julie?
I don't know, I think it's all great. I'm from Texas, this place is an oasis to me. Everything is absolutely gorgeous and beautiful. And maybe not even in the city. I kind of like what the Blackfoot Challenge is doing, protecting all, all of the, the Blue Ribbon Waters that, again, that's not in the city. I, I don't know, everything here is amazing. I'm, I'm proud that they got the White Sash site cleaned up. I'm glad that, that Silver Park used to be a brownfields project and now it's a, it's a park where they have, we've got art in the park. It seems like they're doing a fantastic job for the most part. But again, I'm comparing it to where I lived before. This thing, it's almost pristine here. The only thing I can, I could probably see environmentally is really our air quality. I, I don't know what we can do about that, but I think that that's where there's room for improvement, that we're, we're going to actually spend dollars that affect people's daily health and affect their abilities to, you know, to be happy and stay healthy, would probably be in the air quality issues. And I'm not talking about forest fires in the summer, I'm talking probably more about wood stoves burning and, and how we, we clean that up. And I don't have the foggiest idea how that happens, but that would probably be the one thing I would pick.
As far as the environment, I don't know how many of you lived here while the pulp mill was going and we had four or five TP burners burning at all times in Missoula. I hated to see the jobs go away, but the birds are back, if you've noticed that. Something that I would, would not be against, I have kind of a philosophy of enforce the laws, quit making new ones that you're not even going to enforce. One of the things that would help the environment here is vehicle inspections in Missoula County to where these junk cars are not driving around, polluting the air constantly, and you would have safer vehicles on the road. Also, when you do those checks... Also, when you do those checks, you assure that the people have insurance. I don't know if you realize this, but only fifteen percent of the people driving on the road have vehicle insurance. Didn't know that.
Alright, so um we'll uh spend the wheel one more time.
That's weird to me. You don't do that here.
No, they did them in Texas. I didn't mind it at all.
You're from Texas too.
Very good.
Okay, so this is a question about uh community engagement. So um
It's central.
Are there uh particular professional associations you've met with during your time and your candidacy? Um and in your meeting with those associations, professional folks, um how's that changed your understanding um of the community's needs and priorities? I guess maybe we'll start with Julie, I guess. Needs and priorities? Alright, my fault.
So I I met with the police union. I met with the firemen's union. I met with uh the guys at the AFL-CIO, the the union unions. The firemen get everything they want, or so the police tell me, and the police get nothing that they want, so they tell me. That's a nice little battle they have. Um the unions just need more help doing everything. I I was, I asked them what their total membership was, and they said they've got about eleven thousand people um as total union members. And uh those guys tend to work their butts off. I I really admire what they do, and they do it in this dank little basement. It's pretty impressive. Um I've actually been trying to go around. I I'm still trying to get a meeting with the teachers union. I want to meet with those folks. But what I'm learning is that um for some reason, no one thinks they have a voice with city council, and they actually do. You just basically walk in and start talking to someone. Um everybody's actually pretty accessible. So yeah, no, and I'm I'm willing to meet with with more and more folks. And I I've, oh, I've met with Montana Conservation voters, and I can't even remember everybody I've met with in the last couple months. Um but I learn something every time, and it's it's something that I didn't know. There are all sorts of things I'm learning that I didn't know. But it's it's sure nice to meet all these folks and realize that they actually are very interested, and they're not apathetic in the least.
I'll follow up with the fire department. I don't know if they get everything that they want, but they should. Their response time to emergencies is a minute and thirty seconds to a minute and forty-five seconds.
Yeah, they're awesome.
And if you're bleeding and your house is on fire, or you've got a kid down, that's what you want. The police department should get more. Some of the vehicles they're driving, a lot of them are take-home cars, have got over two hundred thousand miles on them. They're again, they're emergency vehicles, and they shouldn't have that many miles. Uh animal control, I already said they're the redheaded stepchild. I don't know when they get new vehicles. Um it seems like they're driving junk all the time.
Yep.
And the facilities out there, although new, just had to have air conditioning uh purchased for them privately. The government didn't provide air conditioning for the puppies and the cats that are in there, probably to keep them away from that sort of thing. Um and and again, the city courts, uh they need to be provided for and get that bottleneck out of there. There's there's so many cases backed up, it's it's hard to believe. We we probably wouldn't have the county jail come into play here, but ten years ago, well, fifteen years ago, the county jail was in the in the annex of the courthouse. We had a, we had a capacity of eighty people, and it was usually full. Now they have a jail that has a capacity of four hundred and forty, and it's usually full. There there should be some programs that can alleviate that, and we should be able to work on those. The Zion subject.
Uh well, this is my first time running for a city council here in Missoula. I have sat on uh other land boards and a few other government agencies, fed uh state and federal, but mostly in Washington when I was in property management myself. So running here the very first time, I got a really wide perspective and a good shock and awe, so to speak, about how Missoula politics actually run and operate. And what we really see is great divisions within um political affiliations. And uh I would also say on the same par, uh corporate interests. Like you really have to affiliate yourself with the political party or business to get your um voice out there. And I don't think that's the way we should be going. We have a choice. We always do. We can always change, move forward in moderation, and is what we should be adhering to. And regardless of anybody's political beliefs or personal ideologies, we can work together in networking, and that can only be accomplished is at the neighborhood level. Even the city council has a lot of problems in there. There's a lot of divisions. And uh it's just really extensive in its dynamics, not just in politics and the political arena, but also in community fairs and all aspects of your individual lives. So just, I say, going back to the community workshops at the neighborhood level, ending all these boards upon boards, and then reconfirming ourselves in the new grassroots movement and the sharing of ideas, then we can move forward. It's better than being scared all the time.
Thank you. Two groups that I've met with that have opened my eyes to new needs in our community uh include the Missoula Organization of Realtors, who really emphasize the need for a clear building environment. And the AFL-CIO, they spoke a lot about the needs of low-income workers and entry-level trades workers. And that one particularly resonated with me because my husband's a construction worker without a college degree. And um it is really tricky for those folks to find good paying jobs with benefits. I think it's impossible. I don't know. That's what he tells me. Um and so in terms of needs of low-income workers, you see that folks do not have sick leave. And do you want your food workers not having sick leave? I don't think so. It's pretty good visual. Um and so I really appreciate meeting with those and other groups, and definitely am enjoying continuing to do so and learning new aspects about concerns in our community.
Alright, um look at the time. We've got time for one more mark and six in the pile, and then we'll give the candidates a chance to wrap up with the closing statement. Um so, Rick, alright? Alright, if you know what I was gonna do, this is gonna mark your cards. Oh, okay, um I think I get it. So um the question here is um about, trying to, oh. I think I'm getting this. I think you, I'm just having a hard time with handwriting. I think I got it. So uh how do you feel about the voting block at the university? Um these are folks, uh the students in particular who are not taxpayers, uh not property taxpayers. How um uh do you see that effect on the city of Missoula and the relationship between the city of Missoula and the university?
Not a clue. Meeting with those folks um this week, I think Mont Purg is having their their get-together at the end of this week. Um students are super idealistic, and they're very enthusiastic, and they want to do a whole lot of stuff, and they want us to pay for all of it all at once. And they think that we should fund everything that that they want. So the takeaway, I I think, from the couple of students that I've met, only because they want to go out and canvas for me, is um they want lots of bike paths, and they want super affordable housing, and they want the buses to run free forever. And they want us to uh make sure they have really good paying jobs as soon as they get out of, out of school. That's that's what I'm getting from those guys. And that's fantastic, but you gotta work for it, and it's not just handed to you. So I think um, I I think when when I go and talk to them later in the week, it'll probably be more about how you prepare to work really hard to earn those things and and how you participate in the process to make those things happen, and that they're not just handed to you. Um I'm I'm definitely not trying to be condescending um to them, but they're pretty entitled right now, and they think it's all just gonna fall right in their laps the minute they graduate, and and that that we're gonna provide it with magic carpets. So I I'm kind of interested to chat with them and see what their plans are and see how they they plan on investing in this process and and what that they understand that they'll get what they put in at the at the end of it, so.
I'm I'm pretty much uh ditto on those thoughts, so. You know, as long as they're voting age and they've established residency and they're they're wanting to take part in in government in Missoula, maybe they'll stay around Missoula and maybe they'll contribute, even though maybe they're not paying taxes now and they're using a lot of taxes. Maybe they'll pay back later. That's that's all we can hope for, and the the community will grow, and it will have a bunch of more educated people living and working here and appreciating the town.
Uh that's a really good question, actually. Uh you were talking about the right to vote, especially large voter blocks within the university there. Um in order to be secure in your right to vote, it has to be one person, one vote, and then equality of vote. That's paramount. That's extremely paramount. As long as this, the students here are Montana residents and have been here for the qualifications to vote, then by all means, since we ended the restrictions of property requirements, they by law can vote, and they should. What's interesting, though, is at the university is a lot of the groundwork. Just as we witnessed a couple years ago, the Tea Party breaking away from the Republicans, we're witnessing the Libertarian Party break away and will establish themselves, but the members are breaking away from the Democratic Party. So witnessing that, we can really see the moods and the shifting and changes in the times, you know? When there's the greatest, best of times, there's the worst of times, you know, Charles Dickens. But when it comes to actual community involvement, community stakeholding and everything, we should be using the university systems and student employment, just like what Reagan uh in Franklin Roosevelt did with conservation corps, you know, which is actual job growth. But they engage in stewardships, community cleanup, work projects. And then within that, we should also be having savings plans within the university. So then when they do graduate, they're not loaded with debt, as that is the number one US debt right now. And they'll have a nice little nest egg that they can either stay or move on. But while they're time here, you know, in accordance with the law, I think everything's already kind of planned out and working pretty good. So just uh keep advocating for those right initiatives. I know entitlements are not a good thing for anyone because it increases taxes. But there are other ways to go about it, and we can do everything that we want in in harmony with one another. Thank you.
I apologize. Could you repeat? Is it how do I feel about the voting block at University of Montana?
Yeah, so so the question is like, what is the relationship between the student voting block in University of Montana and the city of Missoula? Um and the the question is phrased in the in the sense that the university students don't always contribute in the same way to the tax base, but through property taxes.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. So I would say that the vast, not the vast, the majority of University of Montana students are renters, and people who are renters are paying property taxes um by paying rent, and that they are contributing to our tax base. Um as a University of Montana graduate who lived in our community and paid rent while I was a student, I definitely appreciated my ability to vote in my city. I think that college campuses do a good job of enhancing community involvement opportunities and kind of building up our youth. I know that that's what it did for me. And so I think that I feel good about the voting block of the University of Montana. And if I were to talk about the way that they engage in city politics, I would encourage them to get involved in their neighborhood council. The university neighborhood council is active and accepting new participants. Uh, thank you.
Great. Um so obviously, uh we got a whole stack here of questions we could get to tonight, but we just want to respect a little bit of this time. Uh I guarantee that all of these guys would be more than happy to respond to your questions, either after the meeting this evening or uh if you look at the back of your agenda, I believe, um the email address is following here. All these issues, and that's great to see, so. Without further ado, we'll move on to our closing statements, and then we'll do non-then-dites, correct? So let's start with Michael, and then we'll go Michelle, Julie, Rick. How's that? Please, you got three minutes, everybody.
Well, thank you very much for attending. Um a lot of the other forums, there's been low turnouts, and getting more people politically involved is key, no matter what happens. Um as city councilman in Ward Six, I would directly use the neighborhood leadership teams as my staff to help out, carry out any uh city or internal accord or agreement. And then also begin working, developing here within Ward Six, uh the very few workshops that we can do without overreaching, so to say. I'm merely running because I have a lot of experience. I think that the people within Missoula and Ward Six need strong, uh transparent leaders that are wise in a multi-varity fields, trade, commerce, real estate, and then actually see how it works and applies. And that includes all the way down to the legal instruments that can be used by the city or even private individuals. But do it all together in harmony, you know, slow process, but we'll get there. And if you do vote for me, your voice will be heard, as we do establish community workshops, and that's your right to public participation, right to be heard. And then if you want to initiate your own action plans, they will not be looked down upon. They'll be highly respected and then directly included within any uh local or inter-local agreement that's established. So thank you again for your time, and God bless.
My name is Michelle Kears. I'm voting for, I'm voting for me. Um I'm running for Ward Six, and I hope that you will vote for me. I, like I said, got involved because I got involved with city politics because I was on the neighborhood council. And I can, will continually be a community-involved individual. Um I wanted to touch back on something I talked about earlier. I sounded cavalier on taxes and their impact on household budgets, and I apologize for that. While I am happy with my quality of life, I do commit to quality oversight and immersion into our annual budget and care about the what our budget does to our household incomes and budgets. I currently work in corporate America, as as corporate it can get, I think, in um Missoula, Montana. And I look forward to bringing um the skills that I have as a people person, as a team member. I've been on a softball team for twenty-three years in a row, so I know how to participate in a team endeavor, which I think is sort of what city council is. And um I talked a little bit about how maybe the thing that I would most prioritize would be better civic engagement, and then mentioned that that's not a huge axe to grind. Um so I just wanted to bring that up again because I look forward to talking about what you care about. And I do hope that you'll reach out via email, phone, or Facebook. Those are all my methods. And I really appreciate you coming out. Like Michael said, um there has been some low turnout, so it's really great to see you here today, and I really appreciate your time.
We have our own little clock up here. We're watching our time. So, yeah, obviously, you don't run for council unless you have time to do the job. So I have time to do the job. I I was actually asked to do the job, or at least to run for it, after I had interviewed for a couple other city committees. So that was a bit flattering. And then after I thought about it, I thought, this is probably gonna be, uh this is gonna be a colossal amount of time that I'm going to take to do this. So then I thought about it a little bit more, and I had some more lunch meetings, and then I thought, wow, this could be really important. I could, I could actually get in here and make a difference and 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 try to do something good. I was a Democrat in Texas, which made me a huge tree hugger in Texas, and now I'm here, and it seems to make me quite conservative. So um I I'm a little bit different in that aspect. I'm probably financially far more conservative than the folks on council right now. That being said, I love living here, and the taxes that we pay pay for all those awesome things that we all like about living here. And and I do understand that, that that's a takeaway. I'm a small business owner, still not turning a profit after three years, but I'm gonna keep plugging away at it. It's a different culture here. You have to stick with something and and be tenacious and and be patient. So I I have learned that. At forty-five, I'm quite a type A personality, so that's been a little tough for me. Um I have a very compassionate side, and I, even long before this, we, my husband and I routinely reach out and help people, probably much to his demise when I bring homeless people home. That doesn't make him very happy, but um I've stopped doing that recently. But but we we do have very big hearts. But we do have very big hearts. And although I'm generous with my money, that doesn't mean I'm going to be generous with your money. Because I am a businessperson, and I have worked in a top-down organization for many years, and that has a tremendous amount of accountability, and that's the way I work. I'm accountable to every single person from the top all the way down. And I think about that with every decision I make. Please feel free to reach out to me and ask me questions. I talk too much, and I have since I was five years old, so I'm probably going to cut that off now. But the greatest part of this has been the door knocking, is going out and meeting people and knocking on those doors. And I'm going to continue to do that probably until all the mail ballots go out, and after that. And I do want to be accessible to all of you. So, call me, email me, Facebook me, yell at me, I'm okay with all of it.
Well, since I get to close, and Michael was quoting Dickens, I'd like to quote Charles Russell, who said, "Guard, cherish, and protect your property; for in the land that was created is heaven, there is no hereafter." He was speaking to the Montana Territories. I'm Rick Brown, give me a chance to serve.